All right, I am going to call to order this special meeting, this joint meeting with the Commission on People with Disabilities and then Historic District. At 7:01 PM. All right, we're all here today to continue a meeting that started as a walk-through a while ago regarding the Historic District, the sidewalks that are here along the town green and finding a way to make them ADA accessible. So this is a joint town council, Historic District, and the Commission on People with Disabilities. Lisa, you want to go ahead and start it up?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Lisa Hancock, manager. Just a little background on the topic. Back in September of 2020, several individuals from the town council, the HDC, Commission on People with Disabilities, SHPO, and other town officials walked the sidewalks on the green, the historic sidewalks. And the reason for that was to review the accessibility concerns so that they could be addressed. The concerns were in regard to maintaining the existing historical granite for the sidewalks and that have accessibility problems. The granite stones, first of all, it's not possible to replace the existing granite sidewalks with historical materials. The historical materials are just not available to replace them. The granite stones, there's no way to just lift them up and re-level them because of the tops and the bottoms are kind of curvy as such, and there's just really no way to repair them. So in that respect, we can't replace them with historical material. They don't have the even walking surfaces. Several options were discussed. The desire to keep the historical sidewalks cannot be accomplished if accessibility is going to be addressed. There were discussions on how to provide accessibility, and it kind of ended there. I know there was different ideas talked about. The goal of tonight's meeting is to identify alternatives to provide the accessibility, but still keep some sort of historical aspect to it if possible, or to try to discuss different ideas of where we think we can go to try to compromise on the situation. What I did in the meantime is I provided a lot of different information to you in the packet. It includes an email from our town engineer. I wanted to get an idea of what it would cost to do certain things. One of the ideas that he shared was we could just put a whole new five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk for the length. That was about $165,000. Or if you wanted to have the sidewalk to look like historical, although it's not, they can do what is called, it's like a colored material. The concrete gets colored and they can stamp it to make it look like a historical sidewalk. However, it's not the historical granite. That's $345,000. And then if you just remove and reset the existing historic sidewalk, that was $90,000, but you're still not going to have an ADA sidewalk. So that's really not, not an option, in my opinion. He talked about installing another new sidewalk parallel to it. Our, I don't see our public works director, but our public works director doesn't recommend doing that. There's a lot of issues that are associated with it. Not, not all the property is owned by the town. You have different people involved, different people owning part of it. It creates two sidewalks that would now have to be maintained. It just gets involved, and I just don't think the way it would look, it just wouldn't look right in the Historic District. But that's just my opinion. It's totally up to the powers that be, all of you, to discuss it and try to come up with some ideas. I did reach out to an agency to try to discuss some, some other alternatives, to just try to give you something. In this particular picture, I don't know if anyone, it's in front of the packet. That happens to be one where a new sidewalk was put in against an old one, but the old one was bricks. So it really doesn't look, you know, it doesn't look that bad because of that. However, ours is a different situation, but I just wanted to share what our engineer gave to us.
Lisa, do you want to bring that up on the screen? Do you have the packet? Can you?
I don't have it. That's okay. So then, then we reached out to another design company that was Historic District. Sidewalks, and we just got some opinion from him. I've included that in your packet. There's a map of the area that we were looking at. So that is the basis of your discussion. I also included information because at the last meeting, I think there was a, there was a request, I think from the Historic District regarding an opinion as to the authority that the Historic Commission has, Historic District Commission has over what can be approved or not approved under their control. So I included that in there. The attorney feels that, not feels, he has his opinion is that the Historic District has been set up to advise, and there's certain things that you do rule about, but when it comes to the sidewalks, that you can certainly advise the town council, but they would be the ones that would make that final decision, even, even though it's in part of a historic registry and all that. There, there's other information that I did share with him regarding the historic registry and, you know, to make sure that things would be followed appropriately in that respect. He So I just included a lot of information of this, this special meeting. Another thing that I found on the internet was a whole making historic properties accessible document that someone else actually came up with it as well and shared it with me, but I had, I had already had it myself. So I made sure it was included as part of the packet for all of you to maybe look over, read it, see if there's anything in there that gives you any interest in helping make decisions. And I think what I'll do is just open it up to everybody to discuss this.
All right, so since this is a joint meeting and it's a discussion, anybody who wants to speak, please raise your hand if you're in the room. Just let me know that you want to speak. If you're on a device over there, raise your hand, and then I will call on people. Please, let's try to keep it orderly. And when I call on you, you can speak, but let's try not to talk over anybody or interrupt.
Point of order, please. This is Brenda Felusi on Zoom. Since this is a joint meeting, normally pre-COVID, we would all be sitting together and we would be able to easily identify who are members of the other boards and commissions. Because we're having a hybrid meeting, it's difficult to be able to tell the members of the other boards and commissions, especially for those members of the audience who may be here. So if there is a way that we can ensure that the other boards and commissions are identified so that we can know who's speaking, you know, and maybe even introduce ourselves, just in case some people haven't seen. I know we have at least one member of the town council who hasn't met everybody and wasn't able to do the walk. And I want to ask an equity question and make sure that all accommodations for all attendees have been met. If you're holding things up at a meeting, those people who have visual impairments cannot see, and we need descriptive, very descriptive information about what's being held up or just, or pointed to on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you. So all right, if you're going to speak, say your name and which commission or council or whatever it is that you are from. Susan?
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, just testing out, I'm on a tablet. Susan, Lusak Hughes, I am on my daughter's tablet, so this is new for me, but I'm on, I serve with the Commission for People with Disabilities. And before we get too far into the conversation, I wanted to just ask about page eight and the map that we're looking at. What is that representing? I see a white line, which kind of, to me, looks like it should be the sidewalk, but then it crosses Route 74 right there at the intersection of Talon Green and then proceeds down the Talon Green Extension side. Was that a sidewalk that was never built? What does that represent?
I'm going to request David Corcoran, if you wouldn't mind speaking. I think this map was provided by you, wasn't it? Or no?
No. So the, the map on page eight was provided by Chuck, and I believe that's the basis from which he derived his cost estimate.
Okay, so that's a proposed sidewalk, if, if that were to be done under his cost estimates.
Correct.
Off to the cost estimate that we got on, what, page three?
Let me see if I could try to get that document up here.
Page four. Is it, is it, is the email that's on page four?
It's the one from Chuck Eaton, yes.
Yeah.
I'm just going to see if I can information up here on the screen. I'm just trying to get.
If I can just say something, this is Jody Coleman Marziale, Chair of the Historic District Commission. The map is actually an old map, and I think he took it from the I-95 corridor study from when they had the project 149-142 from Connecticut State DOT. Because if you look at the triangle there where it says Talon Green is no longer there. So I think this was just kind of a rough idea, is how I perceived it, as if we were to do parallel sidewalks. Because it's, it's totally going down where all the sidewalks are, except where you cross the triangle there where the Talon Green is.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, Julia. It's, it's from the project, you can tell because over where the red and white intersection is and all that, it was still all dirt and everything.
We did include this other map here. I'm sorry, it took me a couple of minutes to get the screen up there for you. Hopefully, nobody's waiting in the waiting room.
And, and old map or not, it's, it's, it's interesting because the existing situation over there right now is there are two handicap accessible cut-in ramps to the road on either side of Talon Green that go nowhere. So if that was the plan, it seems like that's why those cut-ins were put there, but then the rest of the sidewalk was never built.
Yeah, I don't think this was a plan per se, Susan. I think this is just what he marked up to kind of say, this is what his three price estimates there. But I think that's all something that, that we get to, we should talk about here with this. So
Here's a different one.
Do you have it, Lisa?
This is the newer one.
That's the newer one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Here's the old one.
Right, that's the, the picture that he marked up, right? Yeah. And then the brown, the one with the brown is, is existing.
All right, so how do I make, I'm sorry about this. How do I make, to make sure no one's in the waiting room?
I'll click on the top, no, all the way up, the black bar, or hold on one second.
I stopped sharing. Okay, nobody seems to be waiting.
You should be able to just do screen share from there.
Okay.
And then hit escape, and you'll be able to see the, the people on it. All right, so okay, so if we look at these estimates here, from what Mr. Eaton is saying, there are the, the three options that he put on here, which is a regular five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk that would go, I think both of these options, one and two, the stamped and colored and the five-foot option, would be parallel to the existing granite. And there is a picture in there of what it looked like with the brick, but I do think, from what Lisa was saying, I don't know how that would look or functionally work on the sidewalks that we have. And I'm wondering the disability, the people, holy moly, I can't see. For people with disabilities. How do we feel if we looked at an alternate option, which would be looking at that brown map? You know, we've all seen the mats out there and how well they're being utilized and how much accessibility that's given us. What if we looked at doing a sidewalk on that side of the green that went down both sections? So on this side part here that Lisa's looking at, you could imagine where that green mat is right now, doing a sidewalk down that whole part of the, the green there, the bigger piece. You have the crosswalk going back over and then doing a sidewalk where that cut-in is, Susan, on the other side of the smaller piece of the green, which would then connect back over 195 to where like the triangle used to be. Is that something that we think would be a possibility? We would then have to leave the, the historic pieces where they are, although I think there might be some value in the $90,000 piece here to try to reset the historic sidewalk. As it is, it's still not going to be ADA compliant, but it might make it a little more level than it is now. The ADA piece would be on the green. So you'd have the cut over on that side of the road and then cut back to the post office perspective. What do you guys think about that?
For the commission without, without the commission meeting. Personally, I have the question. Lisa, thank you for your summary at the beginning, but you started with a statement that puzzles me, which is resetting the existing stones cannot produce an ADA compliant, you know, surface. And I'm wondering where that comes from. I mean, what, what authority decided that there is nothing that can be done? I mean, you understand my question?
Yeah.
You know, you're, you're saying, gee, you might still want to reset the stones, you know, to level them and, you know, do the best we can. And then there's a presumption here, and if there's expert testimony behind it, you know, that's what I'm looking for, that once you do that, there is nothing else to be done to take those leveled stones and make that surface fully compliant with the ADA. Okay? And I'd like to hear that before I answer a question. Would we accept the compromise of level stones that were not totally, you know, compliant with the addition of this other, you know, walkway, basically, you know, you know, on a different route?
Can I ask who's talking? I can't see who's talking. I, they didn't identify themselves. I'm not sure who's speaking.
I apologize. Blom, I am the Chair of the Commission on People with Disabilities in Talon. And again, I apologize for not introducing myself at the beginning.
What's your name? I'm sure it's on here, but I didn't catch your name. I'm sorry.
My, my name is Walter Blom.
Okay, thank you.
Do you understand my question?
Yes, I do. And I thought I explained it, but maybe I wasn't really clear on it. So I apologize for that. What I was advised, and it was between an engineer as well as our public works director, and I'm not sure if David shared anything with me or not, but I tried to take notes as I was talking to people. And what they, how they explained it to me is that you could reset some of those stones. However, the problem with those stones is that the tops of them are not flat. So even though you may try to level it the best you can, it's still not going to be compliant because you'll have like waves and, and broken stones or some broken, broken granite pieces, things like that that can't be replaced. And so unless you were to like, and it would look awful, try to put some cement on the broken pieces, things like that, it just, it just wouldn't be appealing. But that's, that's what was explained to me, that it really would not be ADA compliant in that respect, as well as, I think, the width of it as well as
So this is the, the opinion of the town public works director, the town engineer?
Not that, well, it's a higher private engineer. Who's that?
I don't know.
Go ahead.
A private engineer with expertise in historic restoration?
He does, they do have some expertise in
What I'm getting at is, is there something else to be done? Okay, I mean, is it worth having?
Well, I tried to
You know, once you, once you take it to that, that step, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Clearly, you know, the existing stones, once you level them, there's still a problem with those surfaces.
Right.
So then, I wonder, but then what, what, what else might be done? Not, I was talking, I shared the material with you. I was talking to the ADA Center of New England, where they have, they have their design experts as well. And would it be worth would it be worth engaging someone like that for a second opinion on what else could be done with the stone once you level it? Right? So that, I mean, that's so before, you know, you answered, you asked the question deep. You know, would, would the commission be satisfied if you just leveled the stones and then did this other thing, you know, on the other side? And, you know, the commission will have to discuss that. Some of them are here, and I hope they'll, you know, they'll speak up.
Yeah, I would hope they would, like, yeah, it's not, and I'm not looking for people to be satisfied. I'm looking to find a solution to the issue that, that meets everybody that's at the table's ideas. And I think it's unfortunate that the stone that was selected for the sidewalk that's out there is what it is, because it's, it is a very uneven surface. Even if leveled, it's all over the, we can't get the replacement stuff to, new stuff down there. So trying to find some kind of compromise where we're not taking up the granite and just putting down concrete or spending a bunch of money to try to level the granite and still have it not be ADA accessible. So I'm just thinking, if that is another option, to traverse 195 to have access to the post office, to town hall, to everything that's on the green and that, if that is something that might be a viable option. Susan?
Annalise and Bob.
You're next, Kathy. Susan?
Okay, hi. Susan, Lusak Hughes. Do I have to say it every time? Everybody know. So I'm looking at the EDC email, right? The Elmore Design Collaborative. They're, they're saying that they can take those stones up and, and, you know, over, obviously, over time, replace with new pieces of granite paving. But since they are a historic contractor, I would assume it would, it would be a historic replacement. So is that something that was explored with these, this, these folks? Or did they just give a, a sort of a, a high-level opinion?
High-level opinion. It was a high-level opinion, Susan. Anything further that you have to pay for? So we're trying to get whatever we could just to start discussing. And where, what would happen from there is, once we had a feel for what could possibly be thought of, then, then we try to find the funding to get more information. We're kind of hoping that we have some other individuals here this evening, but unfortunately, we didn't have anyone that could come.
I'm a little concerned too, because in that email that you're talking about, Susan, he says, "I'm not too concerned about ADA because pavement materials can be installed to meet the ADA code requirements." So he's, he's talking about pavement for the ADA portion. And then he's talking about resetting the granite here in phase, like, a couple of phases. And like you said, they're including phase one would be a cheap pavement, probably asphalt for the rest of the walks to buy you some time. I don't know that we're going to be able to pull up the granite and put in cheap pavement to try to fix it. And then phase two, install new granite, but the, the granite has to match like the historical granite that's there. So, and that becomes part of the problem, to find granite that's, matches the historical granite that's there and the quantity that it is, because it's a long stretch. So we can try to see if he has any more information on what he's talking about, but I don't love the idea of pavement mixed in with the granite.
That's what, that's what I was trying to say. It just wouldn't look right if you were trying to do something like that.
Kathy? Kathy, Bob?
There was a comment made about, it's too bad they picked the stone that they did when they laid the original walk. That is the kind of walk that was put down in the late 1700s and early 1800s. The green was established at that time. It is a historic district. It's what is there. That is the kind of district that we have in the center of town. It's the district that people have bought homes in. We are trying to make it accommodating for a number of things. We are accommodating today's traffic in the 21st century. We're accommodating people with disabilities. And I, I think we need to also try to understand, what are we trying to accomplish? Is it for everyday foot and other types of travel? Is it for special occasions? Originally, it was for special events, and now it sounds like we're trying to make it for everyday travel for people with disabilities, because that's a very different use. The granite sidewalks that are there, you're never going to make them smooth, because granite is not a smooth surface stone. Even today's mined granite is not a smooth surface stone. So you can get a grinder in there and try to smooth it off. It'll crack the stone, but you'll never have a smooth surface. And as Lisa pointed out, the current stones aren't even wide enough. So if you put parallel stones or even combined wide enough stones, it's not going to be an ADA compliant sidewalk. I've been working with restoration and historic properties for over 40 years. I am not a professional. I'm just a practical person who's worked with historic properties. I live with one. I have granite sidewalks. I have lifted them. I have put stone dust under them to try to level them. They are not going to be smooth. As I get older, I have arthritis. I know what it is to try to walk on them. I've even suggested the town should put a sign that says, "These are not for power walking on these sidewalks," because it's a sound liability. We, we need to be somewhat cautious. This is not an area for people who are looking for athletic walking, for any kind of activity that is more than strolling. That's what those sidewalks were for. They were an access for getting from one property to another, not for some of the uses we are actually using in today's society. They are a liability. They are not going to be less liable, no matter what we think we can try to do with them. I think I'm hearing what people are asking for, and we need to kind of make a list of what is it and how can we accomplish it? One of the things that was, we sit at home and talk about it. My husband came up with an idea, and I think it would accomplish something at a, I'm not even throwing price on the table, but it would be a lot less expensive. And it would accomplish something for people with a lot of other disabilities besides just the ambulatory that seems to be accomplished with sidewalks. And that would be wheelchair, the town investing in several wheelchairs with the inflatable tires, because if people come to the green Because if people come to the green for activities, they need to be able to ambulate and experience a historic green. Historic sidewalks, historic grass, the ability to feel and sense everything, whether they can see or walk or touch or anything. And being able to ambulate in one of those wheelchairs with the extra balloon tires, they could ambulate. And if the town was able to rent out, lease out, loan out, like you loan out a library book, wheelchairs to people from town for any of our activities, they could do that. And it would certainly be less expensive, certainly wouldn't affect any of the sidewalks. And anybody could use these chairs. That is for activities. That would not be for anybody who just wants to be using the green on a daily basis. Yeah, I guess they could use it on a daily basis because they'd be available all the time. I'm not sure that would meet all your needs, but it certainly would be an, an opportunity. It's certainly unique to what other towns are doing. Because anybody with any kind of disability could use that and actually enjoy and experience everything, all the textures of the green. I throw that out. Anyway, I'll let somebody else tap the floor for a while now.
Thank you Kathy, Randa?
Yeah, this is Randa Utter. I'm a member of the Commission People's and Talent. And I'm a blonde individual. And I was hoping that what's being said might not, can be done, would be done. And that was just to keep the, Randa, level some areas off a bit. Because I don't expect it to be totally smooth, but there are some areas that are major tripping hazards. And especially when you can't see them coming up. And they seem to be, from my memory, more on the side of the Hicks Museum than on the side of the, the town hall. But, so it wouldn't be doing, fixing that in some manner, I mean, would not be totally ADA compliant, I suppose. But at least it would help. And I'm, I'm not sure how much that would help for wheelchairs. But for myself, who can't see where I'm walking, it would definitely help just to slightly smooth things, things out. So you, it, it wouldn't be totally smooth, but you wouldn't be tripping on upheaval of the, the granite. In some areas, it's pretty bad, so.
Thank you, Randa. I think that's part of the, part of, again, the, the email from Chuck Eaton on the different options, the remove and reset the existing sidewalk. I think we have to do that regardless of which option we go with, just because there is so much upheaval and they're broken and all that. I think the only right thing at this point would be to reset that area. So it's as level as we can get it. Realize that it's never going to be flat. It's never going to be a straight ADA concrete-like sidewalk. But we need to do better with resetting the stuff that is currently there, so it's more walkable.
Correct, yeah.
Um, is there anything else, Randa?
Not right now, thank you.
Thank you, Susan?
Thank you. So I'm going to go back to some of the things that Kathy was talking about. One of the problems, I think, or challenges, we'll look at it that way, with our green is that it's not only our historical area and district, but it also contains all of our municipal buildings. And, and those buildings, you know, are, are buildings that everyone should have access to. You know, it, it's unfortunate if they were located somewhere else. I was up in Vermont last month in a little town called Chester. And they're known for their stone village. They built a village, their, their, their original town village was built out of these granite stones, houses. It's very charming if you're ever up there, check it out. But I noticed that, because it was a harvest festival and I was interested, interested to see how they were going to handle a crowd of people with varying abilities. They had it downtown and nowhere near their historic district. So all of their municipal buildings were downtown. Their historic village was a mile away. And they didn't have the problem of, of the big granite, you know, sidewalks that were very difficult to navigate. We don't have that luxury. We have everything in one place. But that said, you know, our, the municipal buildings are, are, are town's most important features. And everyone needs to be able to access them from anywhere on the green. So that's one thing. The, the balloon tire wheelchairs is a great idea, except for it takes out one, it removes one really, really important aspect of, of having a physical limitation. And that is independence. My daughter uses a power chair. If I have to put her in a balloon wheelchair, she needs somebody to push her around, as anyone will. So you have no independence when you're in one of those chairs. While they might roll a little easier on the uneven granite, I don't, I don't think that's an option that, that's feasible. So, thank you.
I would love to see that they would be powered. I, that would be the, that would be a must, I would think.
Um, all right. So I guess I come back to, to the question of reviewing what we have in front of us right now. And Lisa taking, see if there's any other historic out there, area out there. My concern is, again, we're going to find that keeping the granite, the way it, the keeping the granite itself as the historic sidewalk is going to, there's not going to be a way for us to make that granite sidewalk ADA accessible. So that brings us to, if that's the case, again, do we put a sidewalk parallel to it? Which I don't, again, I think there's some limitations with that from the town perspective. It's people's land, et cetera. And how that would look with the granite and then a five-foot wide sidewalk next to it. You're talking about a nine-foot wide area. And if we can find a way, because I, I agree with you Susan. This is not just about being able to walk down the pretty sidewalks of the historic green. We've got churches, we've got town buildings, we've got the library, we've got schools, we've got post offices. We have the museums, we have all of our central items here on the town green. So making sure it's accessible for everybody is truly, at the end of the day, our goal. So can we accomplish that if we start to pursue looking at putting a sidewalk on the middle section of the green? Will that give us the accessibility that we need to have access to all of those buildings? And all of the things that we need? And then we can put up a sign, as was suggested by Kathy, to say pretty much, "This section here in front of homes is a historic sidewalk. It is not ADA accessible. For ADA accessibility, use the sidewalk kind of across the street" kind of a thing. Lou?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for the record, Lou Lubo, Town, Town Council. That, one of the, one of the things that I've seen used for other places, you know, coming out from like around Niagara Falls area and a lot of historic areas, stuff around Buffalo that I've been familiar with. What they've done in some of those areas is where, especially along the Frank Lloyd Houses, where you have historic sidewalks, what they did is that they transport, like you were saying, where we have to pull up the granite bricks no matter what. Instead of having a sidewalk going on the, you know, going along the front of, along the road of Town, Town Green, and then going across and then going along the green and then coming back in by the town hall. If we have to pick those stones up anyway, what about replacing that all with a new sidewalk? And taking those stones and putting there and saying, basically, this is how these stones would have been during a period of time? So that it's still historically accurate, but, you know, on the green side, so that you have, you know, you have the sidewalks that are accessible in front of the town hall, all the way down across, that are creating the problems. Having that be a normal sidewalk and just transposing. So instead of this normal sidewalk, the ADA compliant sidewalk on the green side, having on the, in the middle of the island, having it transposed to the other side, you know? I don't know if I'm making myself clear.
You're saying flip it, you're saying.
Yes.
Take the granite from where it is now.
Yes.
And put it on the green island.
Yes, correct.
And make the sidewalk that connects all of this here, the ADA stamped concrete, historic looking sidewalk.
Yes, yeah, that way, what you do is you accomplish it where you can still maintain the look and people can still get the feel for how these sidewalks were at one, at, at one time. It's still historically accurate, it's just somewhere else.
Uh, Jody, I knew your hand was going to go up. I figured I would call on you now.
Yeah, well, I think we're taking away the, the significance of the green if we move the sidewalks. Because in one of the gentleman's memos here, it said, "Maybe go back to the National Register of Historic Places and look at what the relevant significance is." And it kind of talks about the green being a wide open area with, which is basically untouched to today. That gives you that feel of the whole village center area. So I don't, I think that would be taking away from the significance if we move the sidewalk. Because then you're, you're not, you're not leaving what the history was put there for. You know what I mean? Kathy Calabria can, can talk about this too. But if, if you bring up, actually, if you go to our webpage and if you look at it, you can bring up the National Registry of the Significance. And I know that that was brought up in several of the memos that were attached about, I think we have to determine, the, the significance is obviously important if it's a nationally registered historic place. I was thinking that I, my daughter goes to school in Boston. And Boston is a very historic town. And they have like bike paths for, which are right in the street. So if on the carriage road, if we made a portion of the road, because it will constantly be paid, be snow removed, somebody's not going to have to go out there and do it and have a portion of it possibly painted with, and have that be an ADA accessible area, that, you know, just parallel with the sidewalk, but in the street. And perhaps that will slow the, the traffic down on the carriage road because now everybody's cutting through and they're speeding and they don't slow down. They're going over the curb there. I watch them almost hit my mailbox every day when they try to come around. I saw a big tractor trailer truck, but back, all the way back down to the candy store because he knew he wasn't going to make it around the corner. And that would perhaps be something and it would make, every, it would be flat. It would be the road, which is newly paved on the carriage road portion. As far as from Mrs. Hughes's house, if we put crosswalks in the street there where there is already a ramp when we walked it, we just need the paint, I think. Because most of that sidewalk is new. There is some areas where the tree roots have lifted it up and now the trees aren't even there anymore. So I think because those aren't, aren't technically part of the historic granite, those could be clearly leveled and replaced with something that looked like it. But as far as moving the actual 300-year-old granite, I would be too afraid that something would get broken. And I think it would be very costly.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I'd be a fan of just, I, I thank you for your, your suggestion, but I don't know that I would want to just put the ADA portion in the, in the road. I think that would be kind of dangerous. I, I'd rather have an actual sidewalk with granite on it and some safety measure personally. Bill?
No, I, I agree with you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, Kathy?
I think we, we really need to think about the green. Are we going to protect the green? In, in 2003, the council had a special commission. We cleaned it up, we protected it, we voted to take all the junk off from it. We voted that it was going to be preserved as a green. Now we're talking about putting the sidewalks on it. I, I go back to what Jody was talking about, preserving the historic green. Right now, it's in the purview of the council and the Historic District Commission can only advise you, which bothers me tremendously because the council's busy with other business. I don't think you actually give sometimes due diligence to some, you don't have time to do diligence and, on some of the important issues of the historic district, the, the green and all the things. And tonight, I'm really concerned. We have some important issues to talk about, but now we're talking about, are we going to give up the green? Do we not want to have no historic district any longer? Why aren't the, maybe we better let the property owners who bought homes and are investing heavily in this area, maybe they should be at the table because we're really talking about their neighborhood. The other question I have is, every building, and the museums invest heavily in this, every one of the public buildings or buildings that are privately owned and open to the public have got to invest heavily in ADA compliance. We have parking lots and we have accessibility to all of our clientele. That's the churches, that's the museums, that's the stores that are privately owned, and that's the municipal buildings. You're suggesting to put sidewalks on the green and risk people's health and safety crossing 195, which has no stop signs anymore, which is so dangerous and the speed has increased so much right now. I don't understand, and you're, you're worried about Jody's idea of taking them on the carriage road, which is, we aren't supposed to call carriage road, by the way, according to the fire department, the inside roads. You want them now, you want people who are differently capable than some of us who still have some eyesight left and still have some capability of crossing that road. Now you want them to cross the road? I don't understand what we're talking about here. They can park safely and enter every building on our property and, and some private residences as well. But now you want them to cross from the green to these buildings? I don't understand.
Kathy, I, I think we're jumping ahead.
No, we're not. We're, we're, you're, we're, we're hearing that we want people to access from the green, all these.
Kathy, we're talking about options.
Okay. I just thought, I, I thought I heard that and I, I apologize that I heard wrong. I take that back then.
Yeah. We're, we're, that's the point of this meeting is to talk about the options to make green ADA accessible. Nobody's talking about throwing out the green or.
No, no, we've talked about sidewalks on the green. We've talked about having accessibility. And I just want to be sure we don't get too far afield here before we forget all the amenities we already have for making things safe. And we've, you know, a lot of people have raised a lot of money to make sure we have these amenities in place.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Yep, no problem.
I'm sorry, I think that my hand was raised just because I was agreeing with your ADA lane comment. I don't, I, that's not, in my mind, that's not a safe option on the road, sorry.
Okay, um, thank you.
That was a while back, so.
That's all right, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the, the bottom line question here for everyone in here then is, what are the options? What are, what are some of the things? Because we have the issue regarding ADA where we need to make the sidewalk safe and accessible. We, that we have a historic district who wants to keep it historically accurate and not do anything to change the general characteristics of the, of the area. And so the only option that seems to be coming up is running a second sidewalk along with the currently existing sidewalk. At least that's the only one that I'm seeing. And then what we're doing is now we have eminent domain. We're now, in order for us to be able to do that, we need to purchase that property or declare eminent domain to get that access to be able to create a second sidewalk next to the existing sidewalk, which is an entire legal process, which could take years to, in order for it to be, be accomplished. And then the Connecticut courts have been very, viewing it very diligently as far as eminent domain and the use of eminent domain, unless in extraordinary circumstances, of which I would say, I don't see it fit, this one fitting into it. So then we really have to sort of zero in as far as what are the options? And what are some of the things where we have competing interests between keeping it historically accurate and using the stones, which we all agree are not something that are, are ADA compliant? Or putting in, or pulling them up and putting in something that is ADA compliant? And then we lose historic accuracy of the, of the area or putting it next to it? I mean, I, unless. I mean, I, unless, unless I'm missing it, I think, I'm, those are the only options I'm really seeing. Unless we put something on, well, you know, one ninety-five, you know, a, a lane, which nobody wants either because of, of it being unsafe. So I guess, you know, we're at an impasse. So unless there's somebody that can come up with something else. Because I, we're not gonna be able to find the granite that's historically accurate that can fit that without, you know, extraordinary amount of money. And with the, even then, we're not gonna be able to get it for the entire length. So where, where does that leave us? You know, I'm trying to be practical here, I, I'd like to see this done. But at the same time, we've got two competing interests here that I don't see really meeting at, at, at all at any point. So, uh, you know, I think that's something that we really need to sort of find is, is there new ground? Is there common ground? What can we do? Because putting two sidewalks next to each other can tell you, it's not gonna happen easily, cheaply, or, or quickly. So it's a matter of resetting, you know, being able to say that, well, reset this current sidewalks the way that they are, with the understanding that they're not gonna be ADA compliant. And seeing how we, uh, you know, and, and just sort of saying, that's the best that we can do, or we find something else. But I, I, I mean, I, I'm looking through everything that we have here. And it doesn't see, I'm not seeing any, any real, real good options. So I'm sorry if, you know, that's just my input on it, because I'm looking at this and, you know, I don't see anything else jumping out of me, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, uh, Brenda?
Thank you, Brenda Felicity, Town Council. Can I ask, is the map on page seven, um, accurate for boundaries of, uh, property?
Uh, no, this is David Corcoran. Uh, it is, uh, accurate to within maybe ten or fifteen feet. I, I wouldn't rely on those boundaries as being too accurate.
Okay, thank, thank you. Can, can we actually find something that's a little more, um, accurate? So that we can judge, really be able to, um, look at the map and determine where, if we were to go a parallel route, where it could fit? And if it does actually go over a number of people's personal properties? Or if it stays within the boundaries of what the town controls?
We can, we, let me just chime in real quick, we can, uh, attempt that. We, to get something that's accurate, accurate, we would need to survey the green, I suspect, and, and, and to, in order to put that onto an entire sort of single sheet map, or even couple sheet map. We can possibly look at some individual properties where there have been surveys done in the last forty to fifty years, uh, to know where they are. But for a, sort of a regional view on it, I, we would, I, I believe need to hire a, a surveyor to go in and identify exactly where the lines are.
It could, it, it'll be very difficult to make the decision about, you know, adding a sidewalk or replacing a sidewalk if we didn't know which properties were impacted and et cetera. At least, it would be difficult for me to make that, um, make that judgment, so thank you.
I know, you're talking about, you're ta, you're talking about surveying, looking where the existing granite is and seeing how many feet there are. Um, can you just explain a little bit more of what you're looking at? And I know what map you're looking at, but.
Yeah, well, I, um, Mr. Lubin had been talking about, uh, um, bringing up eminent domain and people's personal properties. I'd like to find out if, in fact, we will be encroaching on people's properties, how much, um, what side we were looking at. You know, if we were to consider, if it's an option, we need to consider all the data. We can't not know if these sidewalks would be on personal property or town property. You know, um, that would have an impact, uh, obviously, on, um, the cost and the ability to do parallel. So we can't make a decision without knowing where those sidewalks would actually end up being.
So, uh, Mr. Corcoran and Lisa, David and Lisa, knowing where the existing grant sidewalk is now, and that is a state road. That is not a Talon road. So how many state road is considered, uh, in the state's domain before we hit personal property? Do you know that, David?
Yeah, I'm trying to look at the project documents from when they reconstructed the green to see if they surveyed the property line. I, I, I would be reluctant to just give a blanket number, because that, it would assume that the road is in the middle of the, the right of way and, and things of that nature, but, um, it looks like maybe somebody else might know here, so.
Like, I know at seven fourteen Talon Green, which is the flat roof house that is to the right of the Talon Inn, if you're standing in front of it and looking at it, and she, she's barely got room for another sidewalk. You'd be on her front step. I mean, she's got her, there's landscaping there. Um, and there's a, there's, that's right where the ADA compliant ramp comes in, right there across from the green. It meets right there at seven fourteen, and then, um, she doesn't really have a lot of frontage. I mean, I don't know how you could possibly do that without, um, being almost on her front porch.
Right, the, the, these are the questions that I'm trying to get answered, is to find out how much space there is, what's on, in which, how much of that grass is owned by which people?
I think the answer would be is that, since it's a state road that we're running on, it's either the state's or the personal property. I don't think the town owns any of that.
Okay.
We have no, that, that we have a right of ma, maintenance and we have right of access, but that's not ours. That's state road, they own that road, they take care of that. So any right of way that they have, we would have to ask them to be able to use that piece of property or the property owners, the town has no right of way.
So that's something we're, we're gonna have to ask. If this is a, if a consideration is being used, is, if we need to consider either replacing that sidewalk or doing a parallel, we need answers to those questions first, before we can make that, start making that consideration.
I would agree, Brenda. Um, i- if we were to go across the road to the green section, um, I would assume it's like, well, the green is owned by the town. So, and that's that part there, we would not have any issue with right of way. If it was on the island section of the town green.
Um, I believe that, that since it's the town or a state road, their encroachment goes both ways from the center of the road. Not just down the center. Right, I see Kathy's nodding her head. When, you know, when I was taking a look at my property lines, it was from, we measured from the center of the road, um, both houses, you know.
I understand, what I'm saying is, we don't have to worry about it, whether or not it's the state pro, portion, or if it's the homeowners, because if the town is the owner. So beyond the state portion, if we were to put in a sidewalk there, it's on town property, so as.
I, I disagree with that assessment, because again, you're measuring from the center of the road both ways.
I, I understand.
The state.
I believe, I believe it's on, actually, I believe the state sightlines are on that one nine, that one forty-six dash one forty-two road study that they did. On those, on some of those maps you have, they show where it is. Because they talked about that in that whole thing, when they widened the road. And we were very much a part of it, because I was affected on two sides of my house. Um, though there, those sightlines are there that the state did for sure. And I know that the town owns the property in front of the courthouse, because we had to ask, the Historical Society had to have permission to put their signage there. So those maps are there, if you go back to that, the, to the DOT stuff, which I, I know I have a whole folder full of it in my emails from the past, when we were all very, very much, and I'm sure the town manager's office has all that stuff, because they signed the memorandum of agreement. And we're supposed to be able to put the side, the stop sign back, if it doesn't slow the traffic down within two years. And we're pretty much at a one-year mark right now. Are we at two now? So they have two more years, the state DOT does, to fix the stone wall down here or do something with it. Because they have five years to do that.
Um, I agree, I, I believe that the sightlines were on that project plan, because it, I know I've seen them. I know I've seen part of the project that showed how far in, um, the town, the state portion went onto the road. So if we were to consider, it's my opinion based off of that, off of what I've seen before, and I don't have that up now. Went in, if we were to put a parallel sign, we would be looking at. Except for, like you mentioned, the house that's really close, when it narrows, I think we might have an issue. But the main homes on the front of the green, we would be looking at, um, putting it on personal property of people's homes. But we can pull that map, right, Lisa?
Yeah, we can.
And look at that, um, so we can validate where the state line is.
We also, they, in David's office, have an ass built from DOT of a project or vehicle choose. They usually do an ass build when they finish the road, so maybe I can work with David trying to find it from DOT.
Okay.
But I, I, I have seen what people are talking about.
Yeah, you know, yeah, it's, it's on there, it's definitely on there. Okay, so from.
Um, so actually, if I have found the maps, if we want me to pull them up, by the way, that indicate the property lines, at least for the portions of the green, uh, where the reconstruction took place.
I think if you want more, you can give him, share it.
David, I'm making you a co-host, so you can share your screen if you'd like.
Okay, hold on just a second here. Share screen.
Alright.
This is a landscaping line.
It is, but it shows the, the line here, which is the, the property line.
So can you, uh, point to that then, please, David?
Yeah, so it's this, it's this, uh, solid black line here.
That's how far the state owns it?
That is, that is where it transitions to, to private land, yes.
Okay. And is the light gray line that's right next to that, the sidewalk that's current?
It is, so it looks like it's right on the, on the line. You can, maybe I can zoom in a little bit here and we can see the, it's labeled as the bluestone walk here.
Oh, okay, I see that.
Yep.
So we would, we would have to work with the state then, to put, it looks like from super sex, some sections of it, it would be on the state property if we were to do a parallel sidewalk. Some parts no, some parts yes, right?
That's correct.
That's a hodgepodge way and a half is. Cause that blue, yeah, it goes right up to the walkway in some areas. And if you go down towards the side to that house that's right up against the road, now down towards the post office, you go to the left.
And point to it, please.
Seven fourteen. That is, again, it's right up to, so it looks like the sidewalk is on personal property. The bluestone sidewalk is personal property. The state line abuts up to the sidewalk in majority of places. Would you agree with that, David?
Yes, yeah, I, I think that's a fair statement.
Alright, so if we were to do any sort of parallel, we would have to work with the state to get permission to put a sidewalk parallel, if that was the option that we went with. I don't know that I'd love that option, but that's just me. Um, I think it would be, it would be hard sell, like it's not gonna be attractive at all. Alright. Does anybody else have anything, any other options that they wanna throw out and think about? Anything else that we wanna look into? Or anything other than what's been presented far, which is either a parallel sidewalk, um, a sidewalk that is on the island section of the green? Um, and I think those are really the only, definitely leveling, either way leveling what we have, with the understanding that it would not be ADA compliant, but that it's just something that we should probably definitely, um, Brenda?
I, I was just gonna ask if we could have, um, a copy of this sent to everybody who, you know, who's on the meeting or, um, you know, put out in the, in the minutes for the meeting, so that we can have this to look at?
We can, yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, and, um, I just wanna note that it doesn't follow the rest of the Talon Green that the project didn't do improvements on. So if there was any consideration for the other side of the road, um, you know, that's, it, it seems like it's marked off mostly here, but, you know, if we were to consider what we're doing all the way down the green toward, uh, St. Matthew's Blessed Sacrament, um, we would need a little bit more information.
Yeah, I think it goes most of the bluestone way, kind of.
Right, but we, we can't, right. But there's, there's areas that don't, like on certain sides of the road that don't have a sidewalk. And have we taken a look at the existing sidewalks that go down to, you know, on the opposite side? Are they currently the five foot width? Are they level and flat? You know, in other words, do we need to do any maintenance on the existing sidewalks that may be there, even if they're not the bluestone?
Okay, thank you, uh, Susan?
Yeah, so, um, just to follow up on Brenda's, uh, comments. I, I, I personally know that the, the previous town manager had said that the crosswalk in front of eighty-nine Talon Green, which isn't marked, but has the cut-ins, um, was, was not, uh, I don't know what his wording was, but it's not usable. It, it, the, the, the slope or the, um, the grade is too, is, is not ADA compliant. And then the concrete on the, the side opposite St. Matthew's is all broken up. So it's, it's not even really navigatable with, for a wheelchair to cross there and go, uh, you know, continue on the sidewalk from there. Um, but just to throw my, uh, two cents in. I also love the historic granite sidewalks. Um, I was very, very impressed with how functional the grass mat was this weekend, this past week, these past few weeks, actually. Um, I don't think that that's a permanent solution, but it made me realize that maybe we could find a way to put a sidewalk in the grass part of the green that would connect everywhere we need to connect to. Because we've got that, that, you know, the blind spot over there with the two cut-ins that don't go anywhere, and we know Gary, who's, drives his way across the green and makes his own sidewalk. So there, there might be a way to use the, the green part and leave the side, the, the historic sidewalks the way they are. Um, if, and I mean, it might not be the most expensive way to approach it, but it, it won't be the least expensive. I, um, so that's, that's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Uh.
I don't know if you can see my hand, it's Kathy. I would like to leave the motorized balloon wheelchair option, um, loner option on the table, because I think that's an affordable option that we can move on. I, 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 I thought, I, I think it's something that's available to people to, to experience everything. I, it's something that we can do now and quickly, because I think some of these other options are gonna be lingering forever. I think they'll take too long. Also, I have, I don't know how many people were talking about servicing. I mean, are we talking about dozens of people? I, I don't know, I mean, and I think this is something we can jump on right away. So I'd like to at least leave that out there as something to consider. Um, also, I know you're talking granite, bluestone, and there were a couple of surfaces that were ta, talked about. And from the historic perspective, the original si, sidewalk is granite. Some replacements over the years, some replacements don't, replaced with bluestone. And the strip in front of the Hicks Sterns Museum is concrete, and in front of the Hicks Muse, and Hicks Memorial, um, Town Hall, and I, I know some of that's been changed, but that was concrete as well. When concrete became a material, the Hicks family modernized, um, that, with that new material. So that's the history lesson for tonight. I thought you'd like to know that. Um, but that's the three types of product that are on the green. The bluestone that's on there were some replacement pieces, and the state picked up on that, and they called everything bluestone. The original stone is granite. So, um, just when you're talking about it, you'll know that you will find bluestone, some replacement pieces. But that's why you also see concrete. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, and we actually did learn that when we went on our walk about the Hicks, uh, museum and how they use the concrete, and that's why it's concrete on that side over there.
You're right, I forget, I'm repeating myself. Now I'm showing my age.
Listen, the walk was a while ago, so, you know, we could all use a little bit reminded. I feel good because I remembered it, so.
Thank you. You got, you got it ahead of the class.
I know, right? Look at that, I got one. Stand up again, or was it just put down?
No, that's me. Um, I'm, I don't mean to be negative, but I, I have a lot of experience with power wheelchairs. Um, they're neither affordable nor, um, easy to maintain. There, you can't rent them, they are typically custom unless you're talking about a scooter type of a thing, and maybe that's what you're talking about, but I've really never seen a, a balloon wheel scooter. So it's, um, it, just to, just to throw it out there, my daughter's wheelchair costs thirty-five thousand dollars. So, you know, I don't think that, that's affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Brenda, is your hand up again, or was it just left up from last time?
Um, it, I, now I have a question, since you asked. Uh, I, I want to, you know, I, I really appreciate Kathy thinking outside the box. I, you know, I think that's a wonderful idea for probably some people. However, the accessibility for people who are visually impaired, a, um, the chair wouldn't help them, I don't believe. And for independents, I mean, I have a daughter who's had mobility issues before. Um, she can...
Sorry. I hit, I was trying to put your hand...
No worries, no worries, I know it happens. So, um, you know, picture a seven-year-old who can only go trick-or-treating to five doors, and really wants to go trick-or-treating, you know? She, that's as far as she would go. Um, even putting her after she reaches the limit at that age, when she had reached the limit of her energy, putting her in a chair to push her around, even just the act of sitting, um, could be exhausting to her. You know, after that amount of physical activity, you know? And I'm thinking, transfer from one, you know, mode of transportation to another, you only have so much energy during the day, and you're asking people to use up that energy, um, in a different way. So, but I still love the idea, and I, I think it might be viable for some, but unfortunately, I don't think it's viable for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Does anybody else have any other options that they want us to look into or consider?
I, I don't have actually an option, but when we start to look at this, could we be mindful, when you turn the corner and go down the hill? Cause if you are in a wheelchair, my office would be the first door you could come in there, and that's kind of broken up, that pavement there, and it's uneven. So while we're looking at this...
I'm looking at this all inclusive, all the sidewalks in there, all inclusive, all the sidewalks that have accessibility to our municipal...
Because if you've got to try to go to the library, it's a little uneven and...
That I would think we can just repair, because that's just, it's not any historical relevance, per se, it's just...
The whole building, we're in the historic district to the driveway.
Right. All right, anybody else?
Do you want David to stop sharing his screen now?
Uh, David can stop sharing his screen now. Yes, David, if you can share that document with Lisa, she can get out, get it out to, um, us, the, the Commission on People with Disabilities and the Historic District also, we can send that out. I want to thank everybody for coming and for, um, offering up ideas and suggestions. I think we've got some takeaways on here. Lisa's been taking notes. Um, we'll share that document. And also, Lisa, I think it might be wise at this point, um, a good perspective was brought up in that we have a lot of homeowners here on the town green. I'd like to maybe find a way to get some kind of communication to them, to tell them that this is something that we're looking at or thinking about, to see if they have any feedback. And, um, just let them know that this is going on, so that there is another meeting, that they can all come and participate, or send in any questions that they have to the town council.
Okay, we, um, we did also try, I'm pretty sure we e-blasted this out to people...
Oh, we did, I know.
Just in case some of the residents in the area wanted to attend, it was open for them to be able to attend. But we can put a communication together that, um, discusses what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think even a mail or something like that, where it's directed, where the e-blast, people might not get it, but for this, it's a handful of people that are intimately affected by this. So I think that's something that I would, I would, I would agree with, that we would need to do, like a directed mailer to them. Please.
I'm just looking through my notes here to see if there's anything else on here that I had written down. Let's see, I have everything on here that I had. And I would just like to kind of clearly state my intention on this, and everybody, if they want to chime in or not, or their own, you know, we were asked what we're trying to accomplish here, and as far as, um, as far as I'm concerned, what we're looking at trying to do here is making sure we have accessibility to the green, to all the municipal buildings, and to all of the main areas that people need to travel to. In recognition that it's a historic district, and respecting the historic district, but also respecting the fact that we should have accessibility to all of these buildings from the post office. Honestly, I'd like to see the sidewalk extended a hundred percent all the way down to Big Y. There's some sections that we don't have it, and ultimately, over time, maybe we can get that on the capital plan, but finding a way to have accessibility from the post office to Big Y eventually, that would handle all of our major issues between transportation, food, municipal building, a post office, the historic district, gassing, because it would, huge swath of area that would make the, the town accessible. That would ultimately be something that I'd like to see. How we get there is unknown yet, but right now, we're just focusing on this area here. So, um, if there's something that I missed in any of that, on what we're trying to accomplish, um, please feel free to send an email to the town council, at towncouncil@tolland.org. If there's something that, um, we did not discuss, or if anybody has any Jimmy Neutron brain blast moments, and they come up with a great new plan that we didn't think of. Um, otherwise, I think we've got some takeaways here. And Walter, if you have a contact, and you can get it to us in a fairly quick manner of anybody else that has, uh, historical, um, experience in trying to do that, really think we're going to have a hard time finding anybody making that, that granite accessible. But if there's somebody else that we think there's a possibility, I'm all ears.
I think that we're working with DOT now on the bridge project on seventy-four is maybe, especially if you're talking about... Because that's a state road too.
Yes, it is.
So you really kind of need someone inside DOT that's going to help move this along.
Yeah.
If it was our town road, might be good, and there's been a lot of changes there. But if there's a liaison somewhere, or that you can connect with...
Yes.
Then I think that'd be really helpful for us.
Let's talk about that, we'll see, we'll see what we can find out. All right, the next part of our agenda on this is public participation. If you are on, um, online here, with people in the audience, if you're online and you want to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address for the record when I call on you. If you're in the audience and you want to speak, just raise your hand, and same thing, name and address. Um, if anybody would like to say anything at this point, public participation is open. We're in the room? All right, I'm not seeing anything. Steve, you almost looked like you kind of maybe had your hand going there, are your hand going or not?
Yeah, no, no, I'm good.
Okay. All right, then, that gets us to number four. Do you want to do it, Steve, from there?
Sure thing, Steve Jones would make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-one PM.
Brenda Felicity, a second.
All those in favor, Kirk?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Brenda?
Hi.
I'm an I, that's unanimous. Thank you all for coming, I appreciate your time.